Where's your vector, Bob?
I think this is, no, we do. I think that is vector. Honestly, it's just the-
That is really pixelated.
It's just the edge. These are solids. But, I agree.
Next thing you know, you're gonna tell us how many pixels are missing.
We could do that.
Is that time?
Two minutes. Minute and a half. What are we doing? Yeah, he just moved it up here. We got one minute to go. I call this bidding, regularly scheduled meeting for City Council, March twelfth, to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. Before we go any further, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Johnson. We're gonna go ahead and offer a moment of silence for one of ours that we lost here within the last few weeks, Mr. James Filmy.
Yeah, before our moment of silence, just my recollections of Jim. I've known Jim for thirty years, since nineteen eighty-eight through the school system. Jim was the transportation director when I got here thirty years ago, but prior to that, he'd been a bus driver since he graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-eight. He also was very active in the ambulance and EMT training, recruiting work throughout all of those years. He was on the police reserve. He was a Giant Days, he was recognized for his community service a few years back as a Giant Days Grand Marshal, Giant Days Parade Grand Marshal. And when I think of Jim, I think most people, he kind of, to- to people who have lived here a long time, he's instituted, he's a Miss La Sueur volunteer. The things I mentioned, many other things that he volunteered for. And not only that, he was always very respectful and kind and friendly. I don't remember him ever losing his temper, getting angry. If, if you wanna be a good community citizen, Jim Filmy is the one you should model yourself after.
And now a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for that nice group of words that you put together honoring a great man. Thank you. Jim, you'll always be, you'll always be remembered here at La Sueur. Go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. We do have a presentation tonight. We'd like to go ahead and present a certificate of recognition to an individual from our La Sueur Fire Department that went above and beyond the call of duty. So, Mr. Mediger, if you could come to the dais.
This is, this is a certificate of recognition to Mark Mediger, given this March twelfth, twenty eighteen, in recognition of his participation in a life-saving event on November eighth, twenty seventeen.
Thank you so much, Mayor Hagg. I'd like to get my members of the City Council to come out up and shake their hands in. We have a second, we have a second presentation tonight, and that's for our firefighter of the year. I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief, Mr. Tom Oberly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, the La Sueur Fire Department in February puts together firefighter of the year. Firefighter of the year has to meet five criteria that are scored for the firefighters that qualify. The officers do not qualify, and I think, I think this year, we had about nine that did qualify. The, they have to qualify in five criteria, like I said, participation, training, state schools, extra events, or assigned duties. And then, trying to remember the last one. It's, it's, well, it doesn't really matter. But, this year, Matt Dur was the recipient of firefighter of the year. So, Matt, if you wanna come up. Every year, we give a plaque, and so, where's your plaque? What'd I tell him? Bring your plaque. There you go. So, Matt's an absolutely outstanding fireman. He deserves this award. He's been in the hunt about three years running with it, and then this year, he finally did do it. So, congratulations, Matt.
Thank you.
And there. There we go. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks. Congratulations, Matt. We now move on to our consent agenda. Tonight, we have City Council minutes for February twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, approval of dispersments through February, or March twelfth of twenty eighteen, and personal actions. Is there a motion to go ahead and approve the consent?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address City Council tonight? Entertain a motion to go ahead and close the public com- public comment?
So move.
Is there a second? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. We do not have anything for public hearings tonight. We'll now move on to our regular agenda. First thing on the docket is eight alpha surplus materials declaration.
Mayor Hagg, members of the City Council, if I could just remind, if you're not using your mic, turn it off. We're getting a little bit of feedback, it seems like. Hopefully, that helps a little bit. We are trying to fine-tune things over there in Facebook Live Land and in live stream, so we're trying different things out here. But, this, this item is a surplus materials declaration. In your packet, you can see that there are various items in there. The city, city staff has determined that there is no longer use for it, or it has met its end of life. The process that we have to follow is guided by state statute. League of Minnesota Cities has guiding documents. We have our own policy for this. Essentially, what we do is, we have a process, and we've internally decided that we're going to transition to do all sealed bid processes, put a deadline on it, just for the ease of advertising and letting people know that, alright, yeah, you have until May first to come in and give us your, your best offer for this piece of equipment if you're interested, and then we'll open them up on that date. So, I'll go through the list here. We do this periodically. I think this might be the fourth time I've brought surplus materials forward to City Council. The electric division has a series of, of equipment that they want to get rid of that has basically been unused for years. The first one is a sewer rodder high power. Now, I don't exactly even know what this is, but I've heard that it hasn't moved for ten-plus years. Guessing it's something to do with, I don't know why the electric division has it, but it has something to do with sewers. There's a case backhoe, D one hundred XR. You can look at that piece of equipment in the packet. Vibrating compactor VR forty-eight, and then a nineteen eighty-four Ford F eight hundred, dump truck that has a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, just under a hundred and twenty-one thousand miles on it, and then a trench roller. The wastewater division has indicated that they have a two thousand three Timber Wolf, seven-by-sixteen-foot enclosed trailer. I would imagine it's in pretty good shape. We just don't have any use for it, stored indoors. I believe that the original intent was to house the sewer video equipment in it, and then it turned out that that wasn't the right solution, and there's a truck for that now. The police department has some video monitoring equipment, so they recently upgraded their camera system within the police department. That was part of the capital improvement plan for twenty eighteen. So, we have some cameras. I believe there's seven cameras and some video monitoring equipment that's been determined to be surplus. So, staff will entertain any questions about the materials that we've declared. What we're looking for is just a motion to move forward with following the surplus materials policy to dispose of this property. With that, I'll entertain any questions. Correct. So, that's the number one thing that we have, you know, issues with across the board, is getting information out to the public. We do have a website, will, will, that has surplus materials on there that we will list. So, we'll list the material, when the sealed bids are due by, and when we're gonna open the sealed bids. We'll post it on Facebook, Twitter, things like that. Those are kind of our mechanisms for doing that. I have been contemplating the idea of reaching out to Toppers and Trailers Plus regarding the enclosed trailer to see if they could do some consignment deal with that. They might have a little bit better mechanism for marketing it. So, I'm gonna reach out to them and see once what they would charge to do that, because that might be the best fit for, for that piece of equipment. Yeah, basically, just the website, Facebook, and Twitter.
We also have a provision, we could donate surplus material. Perhaps the school district might be interested in that trailer, for example, for musical instruments or something. Or athletic equipment.
Correct, correct.
Is there any, is there any of this could be auctioned? Is there any kind of a general auctioneer that would take stuff like this and, and get the best? That would have more exposure and-
Yep, there is, and I know in the past, they've gone through an auction firm in Owatonna, I believe, Steel County. And that is an option. If we don't get any bids, and we still have this equipment, we still need to dispose of it, and that might be an option. I honestly, the est- cost estimates for some of the stuff that the wastewater treatment, or wastewater divi- or, sorry, electric division has on the list is next to none. I'm not expecting to get really anything unless somebody has a very specific need and they, they're able to see it. So, it, we'll evaluate it. If it comes to it, we'll either just recycle it, or we'll work on, on going to auction with it.
Do you assign reserves for items such as the dump truck?
There is, you know, and I'm not even sure what that would be worth. I know the trailer, the wastewater interim superintendent has a number, so we'll probably reserve a, put a reserve on that. I'm not sure what the, what the truck is worth, the eighty-four dump truck. So, yeah, we, we will establish a, a low price on that. Hopefully, we get something for it, though.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to go ahead and dispose of city property via our surplus materials policy?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. We now move on to eight Bravo, which is our advisory board discussion for recreation and parks.
Mayor Hagg, members of the City Council, at the two thousand eighteen planning retreat that we were at, one of the goals was to evaluate the possibility of a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, or something of that nature. What I've done, and this is timely in the sense that we are going through a reorganization process with the Personnel and Budget Committee at the moment, and this has come up a few times, so. And the other, the other impetus for this is that we have this community center report, and there's a bunch of objectives in there. Personnel and budget, I believe the consensus was that that should probably go to some advisory board for closer examination, prioritization, things like that. So, what I've done here is I've included some bylaws from Park and Recreation Advisory Board that I was the staff liaison for in the city of Northfield. It was set up fairly well. There was a couple changes that I made to the bylaws. One of them was that they had a seven-member board. I modified that to be a five-member board, just to accommodate the size of our community. We would have one staff liaison. Now, that staff liaison is not defined at the moment. That may be the Public Services Director, the Streets and Parks Manager, the potential Recreation and Community Education Director. That'll be named at a, at a later time, once we get some of the reorganization stuff figured out. There would be one secretary, that would be city staff, that would take minutes for this. You know, I'm thinking it would be one of the existing administrative assistants that we have. We would have three-year member terms. What that would mean is that the first year, when we get established, we'd have some with one, I believe it'd be one, and then some with three, as they fall off, or, or something of that nature. We'd have it so that they don't all fall off in the same year. And the idea would be that meetings would be held monthly. Now, the purpose of this, and that's, this is defined in the, in the draft bylaws that you'll see in here. The main purpose is the, the board acts in an advisory capacity to the City Council regarding the public park system and all public recreation facilities and programs of the city of La Sueur. Now, the city of La Sueur is a charter city, so there are some, some language in our charter, in particular, chapter two, section three, that allows the City Council to establish advisory committees. The previous section specifically says that they can't have a delegated board for parks. So, that's why it's in, in, important that we call this an advisory committee instead of a, a straight board, because that is not allowed in our charter. I'm not sure if, if, if Council has had time to go over the bylaws, they're able to provide any input on them. But, the idea would be to establish what the, what the charge would be for this advisory committee, the basic terms, and then the next thing would be to advertise for the, the seats within the community. I think that there's been some talk about a potential City Council liaison that could be easily added to the bylaws, where there would be somebody from City Council that's appointed to the, to the committee, and then they could report back to the City Council on actions. The, the staff liaison could also do that occasionally.
Ex officio member?
That, that's what I would say the, the City Council would be, is an ex officio, non-voting member. You know, I think it'd be a great thing for the community. One of the questions that have come up is, you know, with the potential of parks splitting away from recreation with this reorganization, does it make sense to have it set up in this way? In, in Northfield, it, it was set up in this exact manner, except the roles are reversed, where the school district ran recreation, and, and the city ran parks. So, it's kind of, you know, the park, Streets and Parks Manager will run the parks aspect, and the recreation and edg- or Community Education Director will run the recreation aspect. And the way that it worked, my role at City of La Sueur was the Streets and Parks Manager. I was the staff liaison. And then those two individuals from each, representing each entity, would give the updates on any specific projects, things like that, that were going on in either parks or the recreation aspect. So, I thought it worked out well. It keeps the board busy, occupied, energized. They're looking at different aspects. And a lot of times, parks and recreation are well-aligned, and the people that are involved in the boards are also interested in both of those aspects.
Question on the Article one, Section five, non-voting members, and Greg touched on the ex officio part of it. You, you said that those things could be added, like a City Council representative can be added. Well, why not do it now? How would, how would a City Council member, how would the non-voting members be determined? Who would decide what non-voting members could, could, who could be a non-voting member?
I, I think now would be the appropriate time, or a future City Council meeting would be an appropriate time. Essentially, what we're looking for is to establish this group. We would take action via resolution. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do it necessarily tonight. But, what we would have is a, a non-draft version of the bylaws, and those would get adopted along with the, the resolution. So, if there are changes that we want to bring forward at a future date, let's say adding a, a City Council liaison as an ex officio member, we could, we could add that, and then when it's adopted, then that'll, that'll be the significant event that'll, that'll trigger that to happen.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, that if the, it seems like we, we would be able to establish the purpose of having a City Council member on there, and not leaving it up to, not leaving that up in the air? Or, or not? It seems like we ought to go one way or the other, when we finalize this, as far as a City Council representative.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, if, if you could, give me feedback at this moment, if you think that that's appropriate to add, and I'll make a note to add it for future consideration when we bring this back. You know, if the general consensus is that, that there should be a City Council member, which I think it could easily work out that way, that it, that it's appropriate. You know, I just incorporate it into the section four membership, and have it be one City Council representative.
I'm just thinking, parks and recreation, that, those are significant parts of the comprehensive plan, and that, over a period of time, depending who the staff liaison, that position can turn over. And having some, having City Council involved there directly, even though City Council turns over too, but having City Council enable some continuity there in light of the comp plan, and, and keeping the City Council apprised of, of what's happening.
Yeah, I think that would be perfectly appropriate. You know, I could see the City Council member giving an update similar to what MRVT or Merpuck gives at City Council meetings, if there are any, if there are any things to update the council about.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I would suggest we add that to a draft, and we can debate that at a later time. It's easier to have it there and strike it than it is to add it while you're at a meeting. I, I had a couple quick comments, if I might. Number one is, if our charter doesn't allow us to call us a board, let's change it to a committee, first of all. The title throughout the thing, using the word board. Pretty simple. Is that a correct approach? I don't think we can call it a board if we're not allowed to have a board. Maybe we could, but it's probably not a smart idea. Next thing is, on the top of the second page, election of officers. I think there's a typo or something was left out, because all it talks about is nominations for the offices, plural, of vice chair. Something got left out. Imagine it's all officers, but I could be wrong. It reads in the first, second line, offices of vice chair.
I think it's a synonym. I think it's appropriate. It's just the terminology. We can change it. It's, you can call a position an office, if you would like.
No, no.
Or-
What I'm saying is, where's the chair and other, is, it's gotta be more than just the-
Right, there's something left out.
Oh, um-
There's something left out, the way it looks.
So, the way that it's set up is that the chair is always the vice chair from the previous year. So, you don't nominate the vice chair. The vice chair automatically becomes the chair. And that's, that's defined in-
I don't think it is, but maybe it is.
I'll, I'll look at it, make sure it's clarified. Just to make it clear.
And also, to be clear, everywhere the word board appears, you want that word switched to committee, if I heard you correctly.
Well, if, I don't, I guess I don't get it either. I'm with Noel. If, if this is from Northfield, and Northfield had board, but you said something about you can't have a board or a board-
In our charter, and I, we could have the city attorney look at it. Yeah, Northfield has a different charter than what we have. In our charter, it explicitly says, basically, you can't give another board, like a park board, a budget to delegate dollars for. If they're not allocated a budget, it doesn't matter if you call them an advisory committee or an advisory board, they're just, they're not functioning as a standalone board. I don't, I don't know. I can turn it over to Todd, if he's got any clarifications.
No, that, I mean, that's correct. It's an issue of degree on the delegation of authority. When you appoint an advisory committee, it's simply to provide input and feedback to the council for their policy decisions. A park board is contemplated in a charter that prohibits it, is delegating specific policymaking authority and a budget, for instance, to that board, and that's not what this is, so. It's semantics, but I don't, I don't think it makes any significant difference if you call it a committee or a board. It is advisory nature. That's clear by what Jasper's put together.
Well, if you keep it as a board, then put something in the bylaws that clearly states they have no access to money, whatever you wanna call it, however you phrase that properly.
We could beef up section three.
Yeah.
If, if, if that would make the council more comfortable.
If I may, one other thing. Under the purpose, I don't understand why it's limited to giving advice to the City Council. If we have people that are running parks, and we have people that are doing recreation for us, you would think that they'd wanna know, wanna have some advice from this group. You know, maybe I'm missing something here.
I, I think it's the fine line that we balance with them making policies and them giving advice to City Council. Now, in reality, the board will likely give input to city staff on how to do things or what expectations are, but all those expectations should tie back to the City Council goals. And there should be an update at some point in time from the board. So, you know, it could be a semantics issue where it's defined in that purpose to follow our charter. But, in reality, and in, in practice, there's gonna be real-time feedback occurring.
Well, you would think they would also be a sounding board for staff. Staff could bring things to them and say, "I was just wondering about, I'm thinking about, we're considering this," you know.
Two-way dialogue.
There ought to be some, some way to show that. You don't wanna say, "Staff, stay out of here. We're gonna talk about you."
Yeah, I think, I think you're onto something, or I think there has to be a way of, you know, the members of this committee, along with individuals from Park and also from Rec, should have an open line of communication, because I think it could get bogged down with having to go through City Council and back to city staff, just to get the word back out. I think there, there has to be a smarter way of doing this.
Well, maybe if we define the staff liaison, I mean, on, on your narrative, you list the staff liaison, but in the, in the bylaws, it doesn't mention the staff liaison. Could've, could've, would that be another example of a membership where there's a staff liaison and then. And then the purpose is to advise you better to city council on the staff liaison, is that?
We could add that um to section four, you're saying add a, add a staff liaison position as well.
You got it in your narrative, the key items, you got staff liaison there, one secretary, one, five members, three-year mem- you, you. You specifically put one staff liaison under key items in your narrative, but then I don't see the staff liaison in the bylaws.
It's in the meeting section, it does talk about reporting to the staff liaison on those types of things, but it, it doesn't clarify what their specific duty will be.
Yeah, I think it would be good, good practice to add all the, all the um membership. That we're appointing per se uh to this board in that membership section, um, adding a one staff liaison. One city council member, I'm not sure if uh the secretary would be appropriate to put in there as that's um. Indicated in a, another section, I believe. Yeah, section, article two, section one, talks about all of the officers. Except for the staff liaison. So, I think we can, we can clean it up a little bit and have them all consolidated, I think that'd be good.
The idea would then have this back, uh, we have a couple of weeks now to go ahead and uh. Read this, reread this a time or two to make sure if we have any additional questions or suggestions, we could bring them up to the March twenty-sixth meeting. Is that the idea?
Yep, yep, we can look at that, um, I should, these are some pretty simple edits I can do pretty quickly.
Any other questions or concerns regarding the advisory board? Um, que- just question about uh. In, in the Springstead report, as far as the community center, you talk about a strategic planning process. Would this advisory board have a, have a role in that? For, or, or what, I'm getting back to the purpose again, would that, the long-term planning and so forth, is that under the purview of this advisory committee? To discuss?
I would think the appropriate process would be for city council to officially delegate that to the board, so then they're getting advice. On a strategic plan for the community center per se, and they're presenting that back to city council. So I would think that, in my mind, yeah, that would be one hundred percent appropriate. Uh, but the way that it would work is if city council wants this specific group to look at a specific item. Delegate it to them and then ask, hey, park and rec advisory committee, give us advice on this subject. And then they could report back.
So it's a way of engaging the public in, in advising the, the city council on parks and rec?
Correct, and one thing that I found in my time in Northfield was that park and recreation, there's, tends to be some very active people. Very passionate people, so um, I would, I wouldn't be surprised if that's the same here.
Would this also include trails with the parks and rec piece as well, or is that, we're gonna keep that still as a separate entity altogether?
I, I would incorporate that into the park system, basically the, a, a trail system interlinks parks typically is the way that those master plans are set up. Parks and, and uh key areas, so I would think it'd be perfectly appropriate to have the, this board look at. A trail system master plan if that's the direction we go in the future.
And the idea as far as getting people to go ahead and volunteer, uh, do you wanna maybe walk through what that process would consist of?
Yeah, so what we would do is, is market this for a period of time, maybe a month, uh, do some social media postings. Websites, things like that, and then what we would do is bring the applications to city council, uh, and then go through the appointment process. And then once that's appointed, and once all five members are appointed, uh, then they would hold their first meeting and then they would elect their chair, vice chair. Those types of things, so uh, we did that with the EDA when we went from five to seven, we marketed it for a little bit. Had some applications, they reevaluated by city council, and then um, they were appointed and then they got incorporated into the meeting. So, that'd be the similar process, you know, we'd give it like thirty days and see once if we get enough applications to evaluate. If we only get three applications, we'll have to uh reevaluate, maybe try some different marketing techniques. Uh, but I, I don't think that'll be the case just from communications I've had with. Individuals that have come to me with questions, comments, things like that about the community center. Um, they've, there's been a lot of interest in this potential board.
Would those people be notified then about this process, or would it just be left up for them to discover it?
Well, if they apply, they're basically saying, and, and they can apply for any of the other boards and commissions too, it'll be all in the same application. So what we do is we have a, a queue, basically, so if we have um some EDA members that, there's four. Community members that want to be EDA members, their application stays in queue, and then if a spot opens up, then we reach out to them and see if they're still interested. Um, regarding the, the park board, um, we would let them know that there's a thirty-day window where we're gonna accept applications, then they'll be reviewed. But I, if somebody submits an application, it, the idea generally is that they wanna, they wanna do it and we'll let them know as soon as they are appointed.
When, when you said originally, you said we'll, we'll let them know, who's the them you were talking about?
The, any applicants.
Well, what about, what about people that you know that are, are, you're assuming are interested? How, what if they don't see the application process and, and for some reason don't get involved? I'm wondering, if you already have people you know are interested, can they be contacted about applying?
I can, uh, I wanna be sensitive, like I can, I, there's been some that have requested that I let them know if this happens, that's one thing. Um, you know, I can let them know just because they have interest, I just wanna be cognizant of, you know, trying to show any sort of favoritism towards anybody. You know, I want, I want that to lay out to city council and let you guys evaluate it. So I could, I could reach out to them and make sure that the, the handful of people. Um, know that this is happening, if it does.
All right, I, let me just expand a little bit on this. It seems to me if, if council members and the administration know of people who are really interested in this through the comp plan process or downtown master. Step forward and express their interest to notify them of the pro- of the process, I don't see that as being, well, I guess it's biased in trying to get people that are. Really interested and making sure they know about it. So I, I guess I'm not as hung up on, I'm, I'm more concerned about getting, getting people to wanna be engaged and not, them not missing the boat.
No, I, I agree, I know where you're coming from, and I think it's perfectly appropriate for, if you guys know, city council members know somebody that's really. Would be a good fit, reach out to them for sure, um, I, I just feel a little uncomfortable reaching out to individuals. Individually and saying, hey, you should apply for this board because there might be some, um. They might, they might think that they have an in on it or something like that, but, you know, I'll do everything I can that I feel comfortable to let them know that they should apply.
Yeah, you, you may be interested, you don't have to say, I think you should apply, just say you express some interest, here's a process you might be interested in. Any additional questions, concerns, thoughts?
One other thought I have, I, I just, I'll ask a question first, with other. Commissions, committees, do they all self-select their leadership as a chair, vice chair? Or do we have any that are appointed by this council? First question, then I'll get to another one.
Yeah, I believe that they're all self-appointed or appointed through the group.
That would be my understanding, however, based on the significance of the, significance of this. I'm wondering out loud for our consideration, if maybe the chair and vice chair have to be appointed by the city council. Just a thought. It, it gives us much more control over the quality of what that board or committee would be. Uh, just, that's a thought, this is a wondering out loud, okay. If it's not consistent with the others, it may not be appropriate, but we'll think about it.
Anything additional? Just piggybacking on that, once they're on, I guess they, they could, you could get who's interested and why. And they could apply to be chair and vice chair, and the city council could review that. That would help in the. Otherwise, you're assuming that everybody that is on this board is gonna, gonna be able to evaluate the leadership and.
From a drafting perspective, when we're looking at creating this. I can't immediately think of an organization that doesn't elect their own officers and. Um, I don't know how we would incorporate language in here that provides some kind of authority for the council to. Essentially tell the, the people who are on the board that elected the officers, we have veto power, is basically what we're talking about. So I'm not sure how we would draft that in there. So I, I guess I'm a little curious why we would do that, in order to help me figure out what kind of language we might give to Jasper, if that's what the council wants to do.
It would strike me, all you'd have to do is say that the board nominates people and we decide, you call it a veto power, I'd say we approve. Just a thought.
Yeah, uh, you know, I'm just thinking about this, this hasn't occurred to me, um, but part of being a board and commission is that they like to be autonomous. They wanna be on their own, per se, even though this is an advisory committee. Having them think that city council has the say over their, their formation of their chair and vice chair might, might have some impact on that. That's just a thought, um, and I, I, I'm trying to think of any other situation that I've seen that happen. Um, other than CPAT where I believe Dave started off and, he started off and said he was gonna, he wanted to be chair. And the mayor appointed him as chair and then we filled the other positions. That's the only other situation I can think of. Um, but that's a city council member being a chair as opposed to a, a citizen. So, I'd like, you know, direction and further input discussion on that, if, if uh it's something that we wanna add. Um, Todd and I can try to draft something up, um, but it isn't something that I would think is very common.
Well, uh, going back to your comment about, I think, as a group, starting from scratch like CPAT did and now this park and. Rec board, um, ha- maybe having a city council person as a chair for the first year till it gets going. And then, and then someone else can step in once they get the feel of it and, and, and you figure out how you're gonna operate and so forth, I mean. Um, there's a transition there, is there, is there a, a, to assure that this committee gets set up. And gets organized and gets rolling, having a city council person who's got a vested interest in the comp plan and so forth, uh, be a chair for. A year or six months or whatever, that's another idea along, along, it's not the same as Newell's, but it. It, it assures a strong connection to what the council wants and having someone to take over right off the bat. Rather than having a community person come on and be elected chairperson before they even understand how it's gonna operate, just a, just a thought. And I guess that's another thing, how do you, how do you describe this in a clear enough way so a community member would be interested in it? Are they gonna be reviewing the bylaws, is there gonna be a paragraph or how, what would be a good way to give someone who might be interested in this? Good concept of what it's gonna be and what it's gonna evolve besides reading through the bylaws?
Frankly, I don't think we'll have a problem filling this board um with interested people, I think that this will be one of, probably the most popular board. That we'll have, I just have seen this in the community that I live in right now, Savage. Um, Northfield, there was always a waitlist, um, you know, these are things that people are actively doing, that they can actively see changes fairly quickly. Um, if that's not the case, I'll be surprised, so I don't think we'll have to market what they're gonna do. And in reality, people will say, oh, park and rec board, I know what they're gonna be doing, they won't take the time to look at the bylaws and say, I wanna work on that. Because I'm interested in it, um, if that's not the case, then, you know, we have to approach it a little differently, marketing-wise. But I think the people will, I think we'll get a good, good group of people for this board. Um, regarding, you know, the city council being the, the chair for the first year, um, you know, I think. I don't know, the autonomy of the board is, I think, important, uh, to make sure that they take ownership of it and, you know. They, they might need to take some extra time and look at what the council priorities are and look at our comprehensive plan and all our planning, planning documents. To get up to speed, which I don't think is unreasonable for a new board member, um, you know, Murpuck, for example, they did, they did a good job of that. This year, you know, for the new members, so to me, I think it's important, you know, it's a citizen advisory committee. Um, you know, for it to be citizens, I think that, that'd be important to them so that they're driving that and being able to give us input. But that's, that's my opinion, I'll take direction.
I, I was only wondering out loud, to be clear, okay, I, what I don't see in here, despite what was said earlier. Is anything that says the vice chair becomes the chair, it is not in here, and I would prefer it not be from a, my point. Let them each year elect their two officers, otherwise you wind up with people whose terms are about to expire and they can't get in office because they've been there for a while. It, it's a little bit confusing, but I just, just let them, if they elect their own, that's fine. Uh, I was looking at the importance of the, of the, the committee or board, whatever you call it, when I wondered out loud. But if you just make it that they elect, nominate and do the election in the way it's set up, as long as both, there's only two elected positions, chair and vice chair. Because the secretary apparently is appointed by staff, so.
Well, let's walk through a timeline here, if we're gonna try to bring this back up for a motion on the twenty-sixth. I'm guessing we're gonna probably need to go ahead and get something, get our additional questions, concerns and thoughts to. Our city administrator, maybe by, what, the nineteenth, a week from today? And then uh, at that point, uh, you guys can go ahead and draft up the language necessary based off some of the things that we've talked about tonight. And have something ready for us for the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Definitely, definitely, so I'm just writing down some notes, basically, if we get to the point where we can adopt this on the twenty-sixth. We could start marketing um for the applications on the twenty-seventh, be done by the, you know, by the first meeting in, in. May would be when we could um, appoint individuals for this, and then they could meet shortly after that. So the first um park and recreation advisory committee or board, whatever we wanna call it. Um, that first meeting could be mid-May if we follow the schedule, now I don't wanna um. You know, force this along, but I think it's a perfectly reasonable schedule, and if we get to the point where we have some bylaws that we can. Amend on the twenty-sixth, if there are some changes, I think that's perfectly appropriate as well.
Any other additions, any, any other additions to this conversation, thoughts, ideas, suggestions?
Jasper. In uh, in Northfield, how did your advisory board. Know what things to be advising on, was this questions that were, that were posed by city council? Or, you know, con- consensus from the public that, you know, this might be something to look into, or how, how do they arrive at these things?
So, so the main charge from city council was to develop projects. Prioritize that, um, you know, that's based on input that they receive from citizens, uh, you know, and they're recommending it to city council. And recommending it to staff, there were many times where staff recommended things to city council that just didn't fit into the budget and. That's the way it works, you know, the, not ha- having a committee that doesn't have a budget, they generally know what is affordable and what's not, but. Most of the time, a lot of the improvements that they wanted were more than what the city would want to contribute. So there's always that dynamic that you're working with, um, regarding programming and things like that, what would happen is there would be. Um, and I'm working with the current park and rec director with this, is getting these metrics for these programs to see participation, things like that. All that information was given to the board, um, and then the que- questions um pursued about, you know. Was the programming successful, if it's not, you know, what are we gonna try next, that kinda open conversation. Um, so, but the main task from city council when I was in Northfield was basically large-scale projects, capital planning. Um, you know, trail projects, sand volleyball courts, um. Different types of um playground equipment, things like that, when they'd get replaced, um, I think another big one was a pool slide. Stuff like that, so, uh, but we have some groundwork to do, strategic planning, things like that. Um, you know, facility improvement plan, something like that as well. Um you know, facility improvement plan, something like that as well. You know, there's all these different things that the board can can work on. Um above and beyond what they did in Northfield.
I hearing that, it seems to me the purpose needs to be defined far more than what's there. So they know what the parameters are, what there's, what they'd be doing. It also strikes me that you're gonna get into the area of programming for recreation and we need to be clear what what their role is. It's not just equipment.
Well, if I could, I think the the intent is there and under the purpose, it's very vague. So that purpose can be dynamic based on what the city council wants. And I think defining it in the bylaws might be a little overkill, in my opinion, because then every time we wanna say, oh yeah, we. We got we got this part figured out, now pull it out of the bylaws and do this. The way it's written right now is it's very vague and they can take direction from city council. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that that's my opinion just because I can just see, you know, if you put these very specific things in the bylaws. They might not be relevant in the future once they're completed, you know, if we wanna put a strategic plan or something in there that has a finite timeline on it.
So let's follow that logic forward into this committee starts and they have their first meeting. Who's going to deliver what the city council's expectations are for what they're gonna work on?
Well, that that would be the city council would be have to derive something. Um you know, right away, they'd be looking at the bylaws and. Getting acquainted with staff, things like that. But in the near future, after their established, city council would have to charge them with something. Um you know, the thing that pops into my head is evaluating the the community center report and prioritizing and trying to roll out some sort of. Plan based on that, um you know.
So what you do is you give them bylaws and then you indicate in the bylaws that the city council will give them periodic tasking. Then we can tailor it to where we are. Or you could just put in the purpose statement, things such as, and use those magic words such as. Although I realize that might point them in a direction, that's what we wanna do. I don't want a group going out there not knowing what they're supposed to do. Give them direction. Maybe after five years, it all works, but right now. We're starting tableau, whatever it's called, blank.
I just see it as as boots on the ground that we don't have on staff. The opportunity to to have them looking. It's a great field trip. Committee, board. It's one of these things that you see things in other communities that. That might work for us type stuff. I I I can see that and I can see tasking them with with uh evaluating the the. Plan. Yeah, yeah, all right, I got it.
Anything else? Well, then I think what we all are gonna do then, we'll have a homework assignment. Back to Jasper via email between now and Monday, the nineteenth. Uh regarding what our individual thoughts are. He can go ahead and compile that, put it together with our city attorney to come up with the language for the bylaws. And we'll have that available for the meeting on the twenty sixth of the March. That sound like a fair assumption that we could make for tonight, uh moving forward? And now move on to our comments, reports and items of appreciation. And why don't we go ahead and start tonight with uh Councilmember Krogman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only one quick thing on Wednesday of this week, trying to get my days here. Councilmember Roloff and myself and past Mayor Broder will be attending the Legislative Action Day. Sponsored by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We'll be up there on Wednesday. So if you have any, if council members have any issues that they would like us to attempt to speak to the county or to the legislators about, let us know. It's a little bit tricky because one of them, for example, our senator is going to be in committee meetings the whole time we have scheduled to visit with him for that day. But he may be able to get out of that. Representative Vogel will be meeting with us. He will be stepping out of a committee meeting to do that, but we have arranged that already. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roloff.
Um I don't have anything since um um Noel um kind of took 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 in half of what I was gonna say, so I don't have anything at this time.
Where you going, Noel?
No, I didn't mean to upstage Ben. Ben, if I may, Ben also informed me that he's meeting with some other people. You may wanna mention your transportation, thank you.
Yep, so um so I just wanted to add then quickly that um I will be going up there also meeting with some other ex-senders and also some other. Representatives, talking about the highway, um one sixty nine um corridor. So I will be meeting with some others um to 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 discuss the highway.
Was there also a highway one sixty nine coalition meeting coming up uh sometime this month?
Uh yes, that's coming up. I don't know the date of time we had right now.
Okay, I think I forwarded that email to you? Councilmember Huntington.
I don't think I have anything other than this Wednesday, I have a transit meeting in St. Peter's.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Uh last time at our last meeting, I mentioned we had an upcoming uh conference and plan action team meeting scheduled for March fifth. The weather kind of uh forced us to postpone that, so now we're gonna meet April fifth. But I should mention that uh I think our that committee, from my perspective as a chair, is is going through a little. Struggle, I guess, as far as. Its priority and what its uh what its role and responsibilities are. And so we're, that's part of a any new group when you're. Forming, you go through a storming stage and I think myself and Samantha um and Jasper are. Are going through trying to clarify specifically what the role of that group is. We've only met once since last September, so from someone who's the chair, that's a that's a. That's a long time. So just, and I won't get into details, we're just going through a stage of trying to clarify the priority of this group, the role, responsibility and relationship to the. EDA, the Planning Commission, um how Sam uses her time. And all of the things we have going on, housing, economic development, downtown master plan, and trying to get that all organized in some kind of a form that's understandable. And can be coordinated and these different members of these committees can can uh understand. So it's not a. It's not a red flag, it's not a concern, it's a reality and when you when you establish a new group. And I'm assuming the Park and Rec Advisory Board will go through the same uh growing pains as they get get started.
Yeah, I think you're a hundred percent right. I think that uh anytime you start something new, it's gonna take a while to work out the kinks. And I wanna also thank you again for giving the kind words for uh Mr. Felmy earlier today. Councilmember Favalis.
Just wanna touch on on what Dave said, uh Councilmember Johnson. For CPAT, now after you said what you just said. Truth is, is that we've got a lot of things on our plate that we've set forward in this city. Uh through city council and and downtown master plan and the comp plan. And. Defining out what what uh what CPAT's role is going to be and with all of this stuff going on. If there's a problem to have, what a wonderful problem for us to have. So, I mean. Understand that Dave's working with Samantha and Jasper to solve uh to solve. Problems because we have wonderful problems that we have to solve. And thank you for your time on that. MRPAC. The wonderful MRPAC Commission uh has a representative here of our first committee. Um and that is on bylaws. Now that we were presented this wonderful thing from two thousand and twelve. Robin, one of our counterparts from Henderson and. Councilmember Wilkie are uh are going to be working on that. When's your meeting?
Friday.
Friday at three o'clock to. With Jeff Shadine, who's a ex-officio, he is from um AgroPure. And uh and they're gonna start hammering away at at our bylaws. One of the things that we've been pulling for and looking for for a year.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wilkie.
Yes, I attended the Fire Service Commission on the twenty eighth. And um Mr. Greep uh talked about the budget and Jasper was gonna get back to the townships on that. And um. Uh recap of the twenty seventeen and I asked the question about um. If they charged, I believe it's seven fifty and then is it two fifty for manpower? Thousand dollars total an hour?
It it's uh for.
Is that way cool?
In the res- if if you're a resident within um La Sueur or the townships. I believe it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. If we have a service call, if it's just somebody gets called out. It's two hundred and fifty dollars if there's.
Okay.
And the two hundred and fifty dollars calls there covers all of the um the on-call pay. If somebody shows up, that'll cover that. Um and there's a, there's some discretion there.
I then I asked the fire chief if there was any extras above that and he said. Well, yeah, and I said, well, what are they? And he said, well. If uh they need a backhoe, well, I can see that, you know, what the, you know, the person gotta pay for that, that's. And then um it came down some basic stuff like a hose, they charged somebody for a hose one time. And uh a tire they blew out. And um. I heard some things about pizzas or whatever. And um I guess the way I look at it is. Is that's kind of the the maintenance of the hourly rate, you know? That's that's the way, you know, when I was there, that's the way it was.
I think I'd like to go ahead and turn this over now to uh our city administrator for some clarification on some thoughts he has regarding the. The fire department moving forward.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's uh so this is very timely as I was, you know, reaching out to to the fire chief about this and. Um you know, digging up some things, we pulled out this ordinance that was passed in uh twenty fourteen. And effective on January first, establishing the rates and telling, saying, you know, there's a five percent increase every year from this point. We haven't done any increases or anything like that. Um I wasn't necessarily aware of this ordinance until just this morning, when the fire chief sent it along to me. Um but uh we've uh come under the agreement that we're not gonna charge back for any incidentals, things like that anymore. Uh moving forward, um we'll just incorporate all of those incidental costs like tires, hoses, things like that. Into the fee schedule. Um things like backhoes or something like that that's necessary. We'll charge that back because that's uh reasonable, but you know, things like um, you know, if we blow out a tire, those will just be all incorporated into the rates. It'll be a little bit cleaner that way. Um you know, and then we'll evaluate the the five percent every year is kind of arbitrary. Um we could look at it and see once if there's any sort of uh justification for something like that. Uh if it's something related to CPI, that might be a little bit easier to justify as opposed to just a five percent increase. So uh look for that during the twenty nineteen budget process. When we're looking at fees like that, there might be an increase in there for. Uh fire service um based on this ordinance and based on the feedback. Uh so right now, the fire chief is um tracking all the incidentals. I think last year. We had seven hundred and fifty dollars in incidentals where the majority of that was buckets of foam. So they had to use foam for for a fire. Um you know, so it's not a huge proportion of their budget. So he's gonna track it again for twenty uh eighteen and then give me that data so we can evaluate it during the the uh formation of the fees. So we've been talking about it since the fire commission meeting. Um I think we have a a good solution.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkie, did you have anything more?
No, um I know that foam's expensive, so you know, I think maybe in the past, when I was on it, we might have charged. A little fee for that, but that was, we were, they were told that because of. It was just so much easier to put out and it was on certain materials and stuff like that, but. But fires, normal fire, you know, should be the regular rate and and fire, you know, that hose that that person got charged for. We always marked them, you know. Stamped them and you know, who knows, is it ten years old or is it twelve years old or, you know, so you don't know.
Well, it sounds like there's uh some s- a solution brewing here moving forward regarding all of this, so. Hopefully that takes care of that. Uh how about our city clerk? First off, thank you very much for preparing the certificate for Mr. Mediger tonight. Uh very much appreciated by all of us on city council. Do you have anything for us? Okay, thank you. How about our city attorney? Okay, thank you very much. I guess I better remember to go ahead and call on our city administrator this time. So without further ado, how about our city administrator?
All right, I'll try to be timely at least. Uh MediaCom, we've talked to our attorney. Uh we have a final draft that uh has been, should have been delivered as of today to MediaCom for their evaluation. Uh there seemed to be, we were waiting on other communities to finalize their draft to see what kind of things that we could get that we maybe weren't asking for. Um so it's in their hands right now. Hopefully we hear back in a timely manner uh regarding that, so. If everything goes well and at the earliest will be the twenty sixth of March, where we potentially have an agreement that we can evaluate here at city council. Otherwise, uh we're looking at probably April. The townships have their annual meetings tomorrow. I'm not sure if anybody. Uh any township people, boards have have reached out to any city council members, but I'm gonna try to make a point to um. Go to one of them every year, uh one of our adjacent townships and just meet and greet. Uh so I'll be going to Ottawa Township tomorrow night at fi- at seven thirty. Um just to hear what they say. I've met with them in the past about uh fire department stuff. Uh annexation of seven thirty seven uh Kingsway Drive. That's in Ottawa Township, so I met with them about that. Uh we're going through the process, we're kind of on the home stretch of the building official hiring process. Um tomorrow, the Personnel and Budget Committee will evaluate um the recommendation from staff and make a recommendation to city council. Uh hopefully on the twenty sixth regarding that position. Uh we can potentially fill that by mid-April and and uh. Start rolling with that. So that's exciting. Um I'm pretty excited about the candidate. Um I think it's a it's a great fit, so. Um let's see, we got MRVT on Wednesday. I think that's about all I have. Oh, I was gonna talk a little bit about the the snowstorm we had, um and kind of the havoc it wrecked on the city. Um you know, these late season snowstorms are difficult to clear um compared to like a December snowstorm. Uh so there were some, there were some issues, we got a lot of calls, uh but you know, staff was working diligently to get it done. It's just difficult snow to plow um this late in the year. So one thing that's come from it, and I think uh city council will see. In the summer is a snow removal policy that includes a snow emergency policy. Uh we technically have one right now, uh we don't use it. I think we can refine it uh and define it a little bit better. Uh so you know, what that means is that when there's a snow event typically above two inches or more. Um residents will get notification that they need to get their vehicles off the streets. If they don't, then they will be towed. Um that'll help with snow removal, uh help us get curb to curb a little bit better. You know, some cities implement winter parking bans. I don't know if La Sueur can do that. Just because a lot of residents.
just because a lot of residents rely on being able to park on the streets. So we'll evaluate the whole process and policy and hopefully come up with something that we can, um, that can help us do better with snow removal in the future.
Thank you very much. And the only thing that I have that, uh, has not been already talked about, because you guys stole all my thunder already, the side-by-sides, uh, that was a item that was brought up, uh, by a couple of our, uh, citizens a few meetings back. And we hope to have something on, uh, March twenty-sixth agenda to further, uh, address that. Uh, perhaps the, we'll have some information regarding what a potential ordinance might look like here for the city of La Sure. Is there anything more you can comment on that, please?
No, so the police chief, myself and, um, the city attorney, he has yet to know this, so that he's just learning this, um, are gonna be developing an ordinance based on a lot of the other ordinances that we have. And this will, um, be for class-two vehicles. So those are the side-by-sides with some, uh, roll protection and lights, uh, brake lights, things like that, headlights. This would not include golf carts and things of that nature, um, just from my discussions with the police chief. I think if we evaluate these class-two vehicles and then at a future date, we wanna look at something else that incorporates, um, some of these other, other vehicles. We can do that. I think it's kind of a, a tiered process and a step-by-step deal. But we should be able to have something on the twenty-sixth for just, uh, comment and evaluation.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I have is just, uh, give a little, uh, update regarding the Personnel Budget Board's, uh, progress regarding the community center, recreation department, Parks Department, uh, adult education. We're gonna be meeting again tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. Uh, we've been able to go through quite a bit of information already. We still have a few more things to, to wrap up, and we should be able to have our findings and recommendation ready to present to the city council on the twenty-sixth of March. So thank you for bearing with us. It's been a long process, as you guys can imagine. But, uh, we're just about to a point where we have it wrapped up and should have something for you guys for next meeting. And with that, uh, anybody else have anything else to say before we go ahead and adjourn? Accept a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.